Seeing that there is none, I now need a motion and a second for final passage of Bill 24-74, please.
Motion.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, we're now going to take a roll call vote. Motion carries 600. Moving on to new business and first reading of ordinances. Item number six, I need a motion and a second for the first reading of Bill 25-01 by title only, please.
Motion.
Got a motion and a second, we're now going to take a roll call vote.
Well, that's fun.
Second.
Motion and a second, all of those in favor?
Aye.
All of those opposed? Are there any abstentions? Motion carries 600. Laura will read the ordinance by title. Moving on to new business and first reading of ordinances. Item number six, I need a motion and a second for the first reading of Bill 25-01 by title only, please. Thank you, Laura, and we've got Mr. Tabor here to give us an overview this evening. Motion and a second, all of those in favor?
Aye.
All of those opposed? Are there any abstentions?
Final plat of Voice Hills, which is a residential, which is a commercial subdivision, actually, at the Voice Mixed Use Plan Development District, it's kind of right up the street there. There's a couple of buildings building up this currently up there. That plat that was approved, we've asked them not to record that. It lacked a couple of easements that we prefer to be shown on this, so we've asked the developer to go ahead and just wait a second, and they'll be recording it tomorrow. What we're asking, what we're doing here is we're repealing the approved final plat, and we're going to substitute this plat here. Michael, if you'd switch one more. Now go back. So, so there is, there's three easements basically that were added on this that were not there, I'm happy to go into where those are, if you guys would like. There are utility easements, they're 10 feet, they're a long right away for the most part, and that's where we allow general utilities to, including our own, to occupy. Those were lacking on the other one, it is, it's a different animal to go back and get those one at a time, so the developer was willing to work with us on this and just go ahead and repeal this and pass this one instead. Staff's asking for approval on this.
Thank you, Mr. Tabor. Do we have any questions from City Council?
Do we need any additional action to repeal that or do we just move forward on approval?
No, it's just amending ordinance 2475, but with the final plat, it wasn't recorded.
Okay.
It's just amended ordinance and the numbers reference in the title.
Do we have any comments from citizens this evening? Seeing that there is none. In pursuant to 3.10F of the charter, staff is requesting a second reading of this ordinance during tonight's meeting. I will need a motion and a second to approve for a second reading of Bill 25-01 to be held during tonight's meeting.
Motion.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, all of those in favor?
Aye.
All of those opposed? Are there any abstentions? Motion carries 600. Moving on to item number seven, I need a motion and a second for the first reading of Bill 25-02 by title only, please.
Motion.
Got a motion and a second, all of those in favor?
Aye.
All of those opposed? Are there any abstentions? Motion carries 600. Laura will read the ordinance by title.
An ordinance of the City Council approving the final plat of Harper Ridge Phase Two subdivision.
Thank you, Laura, and we've got Mr. Tabor here to give us an overview.
Good evening again. The Republic Building Department has received an application from Bestor Properties LLC through the final plat of Harper Ridge Phase Two. This site was previously approved through preliminary plat of Emerald Valley Phase Two on October 26, 2021. The final plat of Harper Ridge Phase Two legally divides approximately 13.18 acres into 45 of needed city single-family residential lots, R1M. The final plat will also convey the dedication of associated right-of-way, utility, and stormwater easements to the city. The final plat includes approximately 2,504 linear feet of new street and 2,303 linear feet of sidewalk. The final plat does conform to the preliminary plat passed as Emerald Valley Phase Two. The staff has reviewed the final plat and determined that it substantially conforms to the requirements of the approved development plan, in addition to the requirements of the City Code, Chapter 410 subdivision regulations, and Article 5 major subdivision final plat. Staff is recommending approval of Harper Ridge Phase Two. And just as a general location on this one, this one is the one at the most northern point at the city on Main Street, so that one's been going on for a minute, and they'll, they'll take that whole thing in, in one more phase, so that one will finish out here.
Thank you, Mr. Tabor. Do we have any questions from Council? Seeing that there is none, do we have any citizens commenting on this ordinance? Seeing that there is none, in pursuant to 3.10F of the charter, staff is requesting a second reading of this ordinance during tonight's meeting. I need a motion and a second to approve the second reading of Bill 25-02 to be held during tonight's meeting.
Motion.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, all of those in favor?
Aye.
All of those opposed? Are there any abstentions? Motion carries 600. Moving on to new business and second reading of ordinances, item number eight, 25-01, I need a motion and a second for the second reading of Bill 25-01 by title only, please.
Motion.
Sorry.
Got a motion and a second, all of those in favor?
Aye.
All of those opposed? Are there any abstentions? Motion carries 600. Laura will read the ordinance by title, please.
An ordinance of the City Council repealing Bill Number 2475 and approving the corrected final plat of Voice Hills, a residential subdivision within the Voice Mixed Use Plan Development District.
Thank you, Laura. Do we have any questions or comments, discussion from Council before moving on to final passage? Seeing that there is none, I now need a motion and a second for the final passage of Bill 25-01, please.
Motion.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, we're now going to take a roll call vote. Ordinance carries 60 to 0. Moving on to item number nine, 25-02, I need a motion and a second for the second reading of Bill 25-02 by title only, please.
Motion.
Sorry.
Got a motion and a second, all of those in favor?
Aye.
All of those opposed? Are there any abstentions? Motion carries 600. Laura will read the ordinance by title, please.
An ordinance of the City Council approving the final plat of Harper Ridge Phase Two subdivision.
Thank you, Laura. Does Council have any questions or discussion before moving on to final passage? Seeing that there is none, I now need a motion and a second for final passage of Bill 25-02, please.
Motion.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, now going to take a roll call vote. Motion carries 600. Moving on to other business and resolutions. Item number 10, 25-R-01, a resolution of the City Council approving an allowance provision for change orders in connection with construction of the Shuler Creek Trail. I now need a motion and a second to take up Resolution 25-R-01, please.
Motion.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, we've got Ms. Haynes here to give us an overview.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Karen Haynes, Community Development Director. The Community Development Department is requesting approval for the addition of an allowance provision to address change orders for the construction of the Shuler Creek Trail. The city awarded construction contract to J.D. Wallace Contracting in October of 2024. Since that time, several field and design changes, including a revision to the final approved plans for material quantity changes and a required replacement of a culvert have been identified, requiring the execution of a change order to the original contract. The allowance provision will be used for any additional elements of work which may require subsequent change orders. These can include field and design changes necessary to facilitate the completion of the project, unforeseen conditions such as rock, additional restorations, additional tree and landscape replacement, and additional paving. All change orders are reviewed by the Community Development Department, MoDOT, FHWA, which is federal highways, and also our combined entity. The Shuler Creek Trail project is funded through the award of the Transportation Alternatives Program, which is TAP, and then also the city's capital improvement program. The allowance provision has a not-to-exceed amount of just over $419,000, and funds are available. We are recommending approval.
Thank you, Ms. Haynes. Do we have any questions from City Council?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Kirke.
So, the, the change order on there, so the funding, I know it's from the TAP program and from the cell, the sales tax, how is the addition, the overage here, how's that funded? Like what, from, how much from what, what program, I guess?
The additional allowance will be funded strictly through the CIST or the capital improvement sales tax.
Okay. Thank you.
Any additional questions from Council? Seeing that there is none, and as this is a resolution, we can call this immediately to a vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
All of those opposed? Are there any abstentions? Motion carries 600. Moving on to item number 11, 25-R-02, a resolution of the City Council authorizing the city to apply for grant funds through the USDA Rural Business Development Program for the J.R. Martin Park Farmers Market Project. I need a motion and a second to take up Resolution 25-R-02, please.
Motion.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, we've got Mr. Parks here this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chris Parks, Parks and Recreation Director. The Parks Department is currently applying for up to $500,000 from the USDA's Rural Development Grant for deconstruction of a farmer's market that will be part of the, the larger J.R. Martin project, of the event space project. The farmer's market and pavilion are already part of the original concept and design, and this funding would help us move the overall project forward. The grant does not require a match, and we will be utilizing our existing plans and bond funding to demonstrate to the USDA our investment into the project. This resolution is a part of the application process, and staff does recommend approval, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. Do we have any questions from City Council? Mr. Kirke.
I think you kind of addressed it, but so there's no other requirements on us, if we get this to, cost-wise to us?
No, there's not. The week, we'll use, if you recall from the, from the budget, we've got the 1.3 million as part of this project, so we'll use that to show that we do have matching funds and an investment in the project, so that'll kind of help our scoring with, with the grant process.
Awesome. Thank you.
Any additional questions from Council? Seeing that there is none, and as this is a resolution, we can call this immediately for a vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
All of those opposed? Are there any abstentions? Motion carries 600. Moving on to item number 12, 24-R-03, a resolution of the City Council authorizing execution of a services agreement with the Ageus Digitalis for ongoing maintenance and support of the automated programming interface from police department data management software to prosecuting, prosecuting attorney management software. I need a motion and a second to take up Resolution 25-R-03, please.
Motion.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, we've got Ms. McCullough to give us an overview.
Good morning, or good evening, everybody. It's been a long day, excuse me. This project started off in July 2023, several of you were on the council, and so you might recall, we worked with the city of Springfield through an IGA with council's approval to get certain code information that they were willing to share with us to sort of jumpstart this project, and as it turns out, fast forward about two years now, we ended up saving the city a substantial amount of money by doing that because the software developers that we hired were able to utilize that code information, which is what we were hoping to do, to build out our own software code. At this juncture, the development phase of the software that's unique to the city is completed. We turned on the automation yesterday, so far it is running great, according to the developers from today, per their report today. This resolution is for the council to authorize the ongoing maintenance and support contract. The maintenance and support of the software itself is really vital to the successful operation of it going forward. That would cover anything that you would see with any sort of software, like a patch gets run through NISH, which is the police department's database, which messes something up, and the software developer goes in and fixes it, really anything like that, any bugs. This contract would be 100% comprehensive and cover all of that. In addition, it will cover a little bit more development work on the development side to make it what's called a fault tolerance software, which is really a gold standard. The product that we have, the final product that we have, looks a lot like what Springfield does with their municipal citations and their municipal court processing. Ageus Digitalis, which is the software developer company that we hired, I have been the one primarily working with them since July 2023 on the build-out. It has been a long project, I'm glad it is done, but I'm very, very satisfied with the product and with the work they've done for us because of how well their work will integrate into the support and maintenance that would just continue to go on, we are recommending that the contract with them be approved. I've been very conservative with the not-to-exceed figure. The first year, the not-to-exceed figure for the contract would be 75,000, although the developers estimated it would very, very likely fall with underneath the 50,000 mark for expenses. Every year subsequent to that, with the option to renew or proposing, would be $20,000 or less. I'm happy to ask, answer any questions if anybody has any questions on this one. The copy of the proposed contract is also attached if anybody, yeah.
Is 175 an hour, the going rate now for the hourly IT person?
For the, the software developers, so one thing I've found is they don't actually tell you what their hourly rate is. They bill very unique. The proposal that we are doing here is actually a little different than an hourly rate, so we would be getting a bigger benefit than what we would if they were billing us hourly, and I'll tell you, they actually didn't even tell me what their hourly rate was, because that wasn't much of a conversation here for this contract.
It was in the paperwork.
The contract, you mean the exhibit? Tyler Riddle is the one that does that work, and so if he does do hourly work on the contract and he bills it in that way, that's the rate that he would charge, which I will tell you, he is well worth it. He is absolutely brilliant. He did really, really good work on it.
Well, that's what I wanted to know.
Yeah, yeah, he's, he's excellent, very responsive, same-day response time every time I've needed him, so, yeah.
Very good.
Yeah. Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Neal.
It's an annual contract.
So, this contract that I'm proposing would just be the one-year contract, it would have an option to renew, but the way I'm proposing it, it would be a new contract at the conclusion of the first year, just largely because that additional small amount of development work would be done by then, and the amount that we would owe at the end of the second year would be way less, really, so. And I've been conservative with both of the not-to-exceeds, I don't expect, nor do the software developers expect to come close to what the not-to-exceed is, I just wanted to be conservative so we don't bother Council with a request absent something unforeseen.
Any additional questions from Council? Seeing that there is none, and as this is a resolution, we can call this immediately for a vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
All of those opposed? Are there any abstentions? Motion carries 6 to 0. Moving on to reports from staff, Mr. Cameron.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and Megan, I'll commend you for the work done on that software. You went through it very simply, but the work that's gone into it and the changes of why we had to create the software can be a little bit frustrating with the changes in the court system and how tickets are handled and how they have to be entered and hand, they were having to be hand-entered twice by the same people, so to find a software that'll do, where we're not doing redundancy is very much aligned with the mission statement and finding a process improvement that makes it easier, faster, and better, so I know that that was kind of a new way of doing it and building it. So, I do commend the work, and I appreciate your work to see that through. Happy New Year, everyone, it's 2025. To our crews that worked over the holiday, I want to thank you, all of our public safety staff, employees that get called out, that no one's going to see it. I know that was at Christmas Eve, was a busy night for both PD and FD, and so thank you for being out there while we're with, with family and friends, and then on the next day, to be there at the same time, so I do appreciate the work that goes into that holiday while, yes, the rest of us are out, and so thank you for that work. Congratulations to the Republic Boys Basketball Team, Men's Basketball Team for winning the Blue and Gold Tournament this year, I guess it's what, second year in a row? Didn't they, didn't they win it last year?
I believe so.
I want to give them credit for winning it last year, so, but I want to, I want to congratulate them. I do apologize for just a little bit of the inconvenience on the startup night of utilizing this space, but I'm glad that we're here, I know the staff is glad that we're over here because it makes it a little bit easier to move through and get our agendas and packets prepared and ready if we missing something, but all the bugs, we'll get your gavel back for you, Mayor, we don't have to beat your hand against the table too bad.
Got a tough hand.
Yes, but we have, also during the holiday season, Crossland Construction did pull together with our architect, a layout for what the new facility would look like to try to maximize the space and the budget that we have, they're still working on the preliminary numbers, so I provided you a draft of what that could look like, they've, they've done several iterations to try to fit in what the needs of the facility are, or the campus will be, to the best of the ability that we can do now, because like I said, this building was built never to house administration, that was never the plan or the anticipated plan, so the best way to get, recapture the utilization of this building is to, is to maximize the utilization of that building as much as we can for both campuses, so if you have any questions or you want to talk about it, please stop by my office and let me know, contact Bob, or at least if I'm not in. So, I also want to report, so I talked about the letter to the residents, I didn't say it's part of the rate structure, but I'll still say it the same way, is it's important as much information as we can put out, it's in this, the annual report as well, but it is just important that if we can, it just encourage people, if they have a question about what their bill would be, that we will have an address and a way for them to, to do that, and, but it's also important to look at what that capital improvement plan will address. What was, is telling in the report, it's not necessarily, but the, understand that we had somewhere around, even that this is information I did not have at the time, I believe it was 27 miles, that it's actually either two-inch or four-inch, so to put it in perspective, that's, it's quite a bit of work that has to be done just to address two-inch water lines, so I'm glad that we're going to be able to get a lot of that stuff done and actually replaced in a timely fashion to the best of our ability, but again, I'm looking forward to bringing you an ordinance that you guys, I'm, I'm looking at doing it more through a work session so to make sure that, number one, it doesn't slow down necessarily how we get the budget done, but it adds another level of accountability just to say, is the council, is, because the, the members up here will change and, and staff will change, how to make sure something doesn't get lost in the process where it's like, wait a minute, I didn't know we were under a compliance order, then realize it, that that stuff stays at the forefront, and just cleaning it up, and so Megan started working on an ordinance that, that we'll ask for your feedback on, if you want to make it tighter, if you want to make it more, add more language to it, I would just encourage that the more that is, it's looked at and evaluated, that it be done more frequently to address it, so. There's also a groundbreaking ceremony next Thursday, I believe it is, January 16th at 2:00, for the new library expansion. There is a, they provided us a rendering of what that facility will look like. Grateful for this project, if you recall, we were working at a project out by the school, so they did receive some ARPA dollars and some funding for the project, and so I, I'm grateful for the work that the library foundation, or the Springfield-Green County Library has seen to continue to invest in Republic. Oh, I forgot to mention the whole thing, talk about the rates and talk about the water and wastewater, so Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, we'll be in Jefferson City, the governor's inauguration starts Monday, it's a big time in the Capitol, a big time in our nation, there's a lot of changes going on, it's actually pretty good momentum, there's a lot of changes for us that we're going to be at the, the Capitol, I'll be there Tuesday, we'll be there Wednesday, Lisa, myself, and Karen will be with our team, and we'll be going to, working through the halls of the Capitol, working on funding requests with the wastewater plant. With that, you are all here, I appreciate, we had the, the public meeting, or we had the meeting where we brought stakeholders on MM Highway to this area, and we played a video that we're going to also be utilizing at the Capitol, we're going to release that this week because it is more around economic development, that that will be going out as part of our story and messaging as to why Republic is, and it's quite frankly why we've received $50 million in ARPA or state funding anyway, as they see that what's taking place, we, I'm just asking for a little more involvement financially in that to help us offset some of these continual improvements, but with that, I also provided an authorization today because there's an archaeological study that has to be done, that'll be added in the next admin report on the MM Corridor, I believe it's for $25,000, not to exceed $25,000, but because it's a federal, or it's federal highway again, there's some, there's a facility or a location out along the MM Corridor that may be classified as archaeological, so we have to go out there, put some shovels in the ground, see what's, what's around it, but we have to pay for a study to do that, otherwise we can't move forward with that, that project either. I would tell everybody, oh, congratulations to now Major General Dean Thompson, those that got to attend his ceremony Saturday, that was a, was a really cool event, so congratulations to him, I think it's like, how many is it, 40, what was the number, like only 41? But to see all that he's, what, what, all the steps he's gone through and then what's under his command, at the same time, and those that don't know, Dean was the former administrator of Republic, still has a full-time job with CU, and he did all this while at the same time being gainfully employed and leading multiple efforts, I mean, I, I've worked with Dean since I got to the city, even in his capacity at city utilities, but to see what he's done and to see his promotion through the ranks, but actually that he is actively in command and what his schedule looks like and the total number of phones he carries and which ones are, it's just, it's crazy what he has, how he maximizes his time, serves his country, served this community, serves our region, and just congratulations to him. I would tell everybody, stay safe and warm, I want to thank our, our Public Works crews that are out there, that, I know that they're getting ready for Friday, too, just anticipating it, but again, they're never going to get it 100% right no matter what, but at the same time, I know that they work very hard to be ahead of it, and I, you know, enjoy and appreciate the work that they get done, I would thank staff for pulling together these reports, some of these, the Water Capital Master Plan, these publications are great, and so I hope that you'll, you'll find some value in, in that work, but again, Happy New Year, Happy 2025, it's going to be a fun year, so that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cameron. Do we have any reports from City Council? Seeing that there is none, on to the mayor. I'll be real short this evening, it's a lot of different City Council chambers, a lot of different places, we've had meetings over the year, and so I really appreciate having it here in the building, just so we can share this building with, with the community and people get to come here and see this building as well, so I, so many different places, so many different ways, but it's always fun, I always appreciate the hard work of staff and putting all of this together for us, especially in this new setting tonight and putting all this together for the first shot, I think it was an excellent night, hopefully volume was, was great. I think it was an excellent night. Hopefully, volume was, was great. Welcome back, everyone, for the holidays of twenty twenty-five. Definitely thankful for the MoDOT meeting that we had last year with all of the stakeholders here. Staff did a great job that evening. I think this room was packed for a couple hours, and so a lot of, a lot of great conversations, a lot of great questions. So I appreciate staff and all of their work on that night. The only other thing I wanted to mention, the O T L board meeting will be January the sixteenth. David had mentioned the library groundbreaking, but other than that, that's all I had for tonight, and so with that, I'll close the meeting.